Go on, tell me the Malaysian, go open up public. I can do it one-on-one, it's just when there is to be more than two. But anyway, that's here and there, that's what we're not, that's what we're not, anyway. Basically, the budget form did not change from last year. Procedures or anything like that have changed. So, I'm just gonna go down through the pages, I'm not gonna read every number. You know, I'm not gonna install any base intelligence, but there's a few things I do wanna point out. On page one, the first thing would be your property tax asking is two hundred and twenty-one thousand, one oh five and sixty-two cents. Last year, with the same tax levy of forty-five cents, we were able to raise two hundred and sixteen thousand and oh thirty-four. So, your tax asking actually went up by five dollars and seventy-one dollars over last year. So, about a two percent increase, so that's not bad. The other thing on the front page I wanna point out is your valuation. Your valuation for the twenty-four year was forty-nine million, one thirty-four and five hundred and eighty-three. Well, last year, it was forty-eight million, seven, uh, seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, your valuation went up by one million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, roughly there again, two percent increase. And like I said, the levy, we re- that remained the same, forty-five cents, and there again, that's the maximum that you can ask for. Page two, there again, column one is still your actual numbers. Those come off of your audit that was prepared la- for last year's fiscal year. Column two is actual slash estimated numbers. We had actual numbers up through August. And we estimated, or I sh- I estimated what the September would be. So, that's those numbers, so are they close? They should be close. Are they accurate? No. But at the beginning of your fiscal year, you've had a million, one seventy-five, one million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars in cash. Sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents in investments, CDs. And your county treasury balance was six thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. For a total of one million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, four thirty-two, sixty-six. So, with what I estimated for your income through this fiscal year, you'd have total resources available of two million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, one thirty-six. I'm estimating your disbursements to be one million, four oh two, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. There again, that number comes from page through four, sorry. There again, this is the best of my ability, that these are fairly accurate. So, based on last year's numbers, I would say it's pretty close because that, yeah, because the previous year, your, your total expenditures were a hundred and one million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand. So, we're pretty close, I would say, we're within thirty thousand dollars. So, anyway, so if your income and expenses come in, you should have roughly, to start the new budget year, a million and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars to start the year. And that's broken down in column three, up above. Cash, investments, county treasury. Okay, so, column three is your budget numbers. Personal property tax is two hundred and eighteen thousand, nine sixteen, forty-six. That, of course, doesn't match the front page, and the reason for that is we have to withhold the one percent that the county treasurer gets. For at the bottom of the page, and that's two thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. So, you add that to the two eighteen, you come up with the front page. Highway allocation money, a hundred and twenty-four thousand, four seventy-seven. That's what it is, that's what they're giving, that's what they're projecting to give you this year. And last year's budget year was one hundred and twenty thousand, three sixty-nine. So, it's up by four thousand and one hundred and eighty dollars, about three, three point four percent. Your community equalization money, this year, there, the, the number that they gave us was thirty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-five. Last year, it was thirty-four thousand, forty-three dollars. There again, it's up by two thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars, about approximately seven percent. The other numbers, there again, they're estimated, I usually, I'm pretty sure I said this last year or not, but I say it again, I will say it again this year. That when I, when I put in the budget figures for income, I usually try to go low, because it's easier to have more money come in than say, oh geez, we overbudgeted too much income and it came in low. So, I'd rather be on the conservative side, on the income side, but I usually go the other direction on the expenditures. Your total disbursements that we're going, that I'm budgeting for this year come off to two million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars. Comparing that with last year, last year, we had budgeted four million, two hundred and eight dollars, five hundred and fifty-two dollars. Four million, two hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars. Okay, the reason for the big discrepancy you're gonna ask, because I did. We budgeted a lot more capital outlay last year. We did a lot more outlay for streets, a lot more, we had a million and six for street outlay, capital outlay, a million and two for the swimming pool. And then we had our debt service of eighty thousand, so it left us with operating expenses of one million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand in last budget year. This year, our actual operating budget is going to be one million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So, it's up about two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, approximately eighteen percent across the board. Okay, so, the budget numbers for expenditures is page three. And this is how it's broken down. We got three hundred, two thousand, five hundred as a general, a hundred and ten thousand for the police. Twenty thousand for fire, streets, operating expenses of a hundred and twenty-one thousand, plus another a hundred and fifty thousand for capital outlay. So, the street that you're gonna do in front of the fire hall, that's included in there, plus anything else that you may need to do. Debt service for Sharon Street, eighty thousand, two oh two. Culture and recreation, that's your pool, your halls, and parks, operating expense of one oh seven, eight hundred. Capital improvements, two hundred and fifty thousand. I believe there's about a hundred and sixty that's supposed to be more like a down payment for the pool. So, I put it in some extra just for, um, design, if you have to hire engineers and things of that nature. Capital, other capital outlay, in case you have to buy some equipment, vehicle or something for the parks or something like that. Solid waste, ninety-nine thousand, wastewater, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred. Capital outlay is one hundred thousand. There again, if you're putting in some new streets in front of the fire hall, maybe, I figured I'd, I'd budget money in case you wanna replace the sewer line or the water lines. So, we have money available to do those things. Operating expenses for water, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred, there again, additional capital outlay. So, any que- the real question is, are you gonna spend two million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand? Uh, more than likely not. It'll probably be more in line with what you did last year, and the year before, a million, four thirty-five. Well, the way everything has increased, you just, you have to plan for the, yeah, worst case scenario. So, um, if you have any questions, please interrupt. Because, like I said, I'm not gonna read every number, but, I don't wanna, yeah, I don't want you to feel like you can't interrupt me. Page four is the actual expenses that came off your audit. I'm not, I'm sorry, not that four, page five is the ones that came off your audit that was prepared for you guys. Page six has nothing to do with you guys. Page seven, I've got myself as the person to contact if they have an issue. I've got Trantel and Larry on there, um, as representatives for the city. Okay, page eight and nine is the calculation of your restricted funds and restricted funds authority. You have to have restricted funds authority in order to levy taxes, okay? Your, so we'll sort of go about this backwards a little bit, we'll start with page nine. Your restricted funds authority starts with last year's number. And that's on line one, and that's six hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. All right, so, the state gives you an automatic increase of two point five percent. We have in the past taken an extra one percent to keep building up our, um, our, uh, restricted funds authority. And that's an additional one percent, and we have to have at least, as it shows there, we have to have at least seventy-five percent. So, if you all vote for it, we'll have eighty percent. And if not, then we won't raise it one percent. All right, a three percent of line one happens to be twenty-two thousand, five and three forty. But we give you a total restricted funds authority of six hundred and, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. Okay, the restricted funds, the way I have them calculated, are five hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and four, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-six cents. And that comes from page eight. There again, your restricted funds have not changed from last year, for, actually, for many years. In your case, property taxes are part of it, your motor vehicle prorate, your mortgageable tax, your sales tax, your highway allocation money, your motor vehicle fees, and your equalization money are all restricted funds. In your case, we do have some exceptions to the restricted funds, and that would be, the main one is your bonded indebtedness. I'm using thirty-three thousand dollars of your sales tax money to help pay for the bonds. And that gets, allows us to lower your restricted funds down to five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And we did, basically, we did the same thing last year. Because if I remember right, I thought within my folder, that a part of your sales tax is supposed to be going toward that, so. So, that's, that's the amount that I used. Questions? Line ten has to be a positive number, otherwise it's not a, it's not a tumble, like, okay? So, that's eight and nine. Line, or page ten is your, um, street, uh, your capital, capital outlay exemption, we're using a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, I guess I didn't point that out. But we had a carryover of unused last year of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven sixteen eighty-nine, so I just bumped it up there, just trying to get away from having that restricted. That being added back into restricted, just like because of the way the budget had been prepared in prior years. Okay? So, anyway, that's that. Page eleven just shows you the calculation of your levy limit, and there again, like I said, the maximum that a city can ask for in their general fund is forty-five cents. If you really wanted to, we could go above that forty-five cents and levy your eighty thousand dollars of debt service, being as house for the street. You could levy additional tax if you still desire, but we have not at the, up to this point. Page twelve is a little fancy calculation that we had to do in order to avoid going to center this year. And just got it through the wire, didn't get to lie, steal or cheat, it just worked off that way. So, that's one less speaking thing I have to do. Okay, so, basically, it starts with your prior tax, prior year tax request of two hundred and sixteen thousand, both thirty-four and fifty-four cents. They do give you an automatic increase of two percent, plus if there's any real growth percentage increase, and you guys did have a real growth percentage of point seven six. So, your total increase was two point seven six, or five thousand, nine hundred, five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-two cents. So, it gives you a property tax authority of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine ninety-seven, oh nine, and we're asking with the forty-five cents, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, one oh five, sixty-two. So, we're about eight hundred and some dollars below. So, so without that extra two and, two point seven six percent, somebody would've been going to the center. Okay. The next page is what was published in the paper, you've probably all seen that. And then we got a copy of the resolution, that's what we're gonna have to pass once we approve the budget and go into a special hearing to set the final tax request, that's the resolution that we're gonna pass. And the other pages are basically nothing, just for you guys. All questions?
From anybody? There were a multitude of cities and school districts that did go to the center, and some of them were large sums of money. So, what, what dictated that? Were you, you were there and represented some of those towns?
Last year, I think.
This, the one upcoming, is it upcoming or was it?
It's upcoming, it's the twenty-third. Yes, I'll be there for the city of Bloomfield. Actually, the city of Bloomfield is about twenty-four thousand dollars over this year. And basically, the reason for that is they didn't change their levy, it was the valuation that pushed them over. And they, they felt with, even though it was twenty-four thousand dollars, they felt that they, with the way things have changed, as far as everything increasing in value, um, that they felt that they needed actually twenty-four thousand dollars. Because their, their health insurance alone went up twenty-two percent. So, they pretty much were gonna be, that was gonna be wiped out by, by that. So, why, what's going on with the school, Bloomfield School, it's an empty school, I don't know.
There weren't the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, so I'm not sure what's going on.
Okay, all right.
To be honest.
Just curious.
No, I.
We're doing real good, and they're struggling, and they're along the way.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
So, I would think that if you want to increase the restricted funds by the additional one percent, that we probably would need a motion. Right, you can do that, just keep ahead, I'll make that question. I'll second it.
Okay, a motion been made and seconded. Murphy?
Yes.
Pice?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
I need to vote in this case to do the eighty percent, so I don't think. The next one would be the resolution.
Well, then we actually, you probably should close the budget hearing first, and then we have to open the budget. I'll make the motion to close the budget hearing.
Motion's been made and seconded, Pice?
Yes.
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Okay, now we need a motion to resume the regular city council meeting.
I'll make that motion. Go ahead. Don't you wanna do, set the property tax request first?
Outside of the regular meeting?
Well, I guess, yeah, you probably need to do it, I'm sorry, we should do it in the meeting, correct? I'll make the motion to start the regular meeting.
Are you, Jane, you did it, did you?
Jason did it, the second.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Oh.
I'll, I'll use shoes the second, Jane, okay?
All right.
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And now we're gonna do what?
Yeah, so we're gonna, especially, well, basically, we have to have a special hearing to set the property tax request for next fiscal year. And that's the resolution, based, it's, it's, oil fountain, the resolution. So, do you wanna read it, Donna, or do you wanna read?
Resolution setting the property tax request, resolution number nine, dash twelve, dash twenty-four, dash one. Whereas Nebraska revised statute seventy-seven, dash one six three-two, and seventy-seven, dash one six three-three, provides that the governing body of the city of Crofton passes by a majority vote a resolution to ordinance setting the tax request. And whereas a special public hearing was held, is required by law to hear and consider comments concerning the property tax request. Now therefore, the governing body of the city of Crofton resolves that. One, the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five property tax request be set at general fund, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and five dollars and sixty-two cents. Two, the total assessed value of property differs from last year's total assessed value by two point three-five percent. Three, the tax rate which would levy the same amount of property taxes as last year, when multiplied by the new total assessed value of property, would be zero point four three nine six seven nine per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Four, the city of Crofton proposes to adopt a property tax request that will cause its tax rate to be zero point four five percent of one hundred, per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Five, based on the proposed property tax request and changes in other revenue, the total operating budget of the city of Crofton will increase.
Decrease.
Or decrease last year's budget by minus four eight point one four percent, and it is decreased?
Yes.
Six, a copy of this resolution be certified and forwarded to the county clerk honorary for October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Motion by, seconded by, to without resolution, nine twelve, dash twenty-four, dash one.
Do we need a motion prior to that, to wave with three times?
No, that's where it says.
Thank you. Make a motion. I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
Pice?
Yes.
Lawton?
Yes.
And that was. Okay. Any questions, gentlemen?
What's that? I, I guess I just wanna thank Donna and Trantel for helping me prepare the budget again, and I think maybe, extra, maybe you should call me or set up, so we can do something in July. So, we can talk in July, so that they have the month of log, log, not the August, to determine what they wanna do next year, so that way, yeah, a little more input.
We'll have our group put it on their calendar, so we can take care of it.
That's why I'm bringing it up here. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
If you ask, anybody has questions, they're more than free to call me, email me.
Okay, with that, I believe.
I think he might be a little bit late.
So, we'll go on to motion, vote, to approve the.
Hire an auditor? Well, no.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes. Second.
Motion's been seconded, approved and seconded. Pice? Evans, yes, Warren?
Yes.
And then?
Yes.
And then claims.
I'll make the motion to approve the claim.
I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the claim. Lawton?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Pice? Oh, yes.
You hired an auditor. I heard you audited.
Okay. All right, we'll make the motion to hire an auditor for the upcoming season.
I'll make the motion to hire the new auditor for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
I'll second it. Evans, yes. Lawton?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next item would be a motion to go in closed session and discuss potential, yeah, possible property sales.
Possible what?
Property sales.
Oh, I made that motion in the closed session.
With that, extended invitation that you're pleased to have Nick join us, because we have some folks, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Counsel?
Yes.
So, the motion's been made and seconded.
Yes.
Evans, yes, Warren?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
What I need is a minute.
I'll second it.
Cooper?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Pice? And Evans. Okay. Do that right now?
Sure.
Okay, we, we need a motion to accept the offers for the property?
I'll make the motion to accept the offer for the property.
Okay, wait, now who's gonna, who made the motion?
I do.
Please. Jane and Larry. To accept offer, do we specify which one, or?
There's no, three offers, then.
Three offers, okay.
Cause of the three parcels. Okay, Pice?
Yes.
Evans? Yes, Ms. Kate, uh, Lawton?
Yes.
And Murphy?
Yes.
Okay. Moving down the list, I believe the next item would be.
Next one is, yeah, now.
Mr. Cooper, what do you want me?
I brought you guys a copy of the latest budget we've been working on for pool. So, we kinda revamped some things with, uh, with the current grant application being put together by, by Lowell. And so, he just submitted that, I believe, Friday for a six hundred thousand dollar grant. So, what, what we've kinda been thinking was if, if we get that grant, we might as well look at the pool house at the same time. You know, I'm guessing some of that equipment, you probably don't wanna put in the whole pool house, or look at that house, or whatever. So, we just thought if we get that grant, you know, then we started working with the budget, you know, what does that look like in order to do that? So, still using the project. So, still using the project cost there on the, on the top of one-point-four million. J E O estimated the renovation of the pool, one-point-two-five, one-point-four. So we got a one-four, the bathhouse, we got the construction estimate from Red Arnes at five-fifty-eight. We did throw in seventy-five thousand pool amenities, slides, whatever, you know, just to...
Thirty-five or seventy-five?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Yeah, for some fixtures, or whatever that needs to be done. So that, that number can be debatable, that's for sure. And then we got what we have in the, in the foundation account with the Gunther family, there's four-hundred thousand there. There's eighty-eight thousand in the other pool account that people donated to within the foundation. Barbara's emergence, pool account has seventeen thousand in it. The city loss fund has ninety-nine. And if we get the six-hundred grant, basically, that would leave five-ninety-five B finance, but that's with the city using a down payment of two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand. So, whether we use the land proceeds, land sale proceeds to make that up, you know, originally, we were talking like a hundred-and-thirty to a hundred-and-fifty thousand without the bathhouse being, being part of the project. But, what I want to do is keep that loan under six-hundred thousand so we can make sure we can make the payment with the sales tax increase that was passed last year. So, on the far right, financing five-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand is gonna have an annual payment of fifty thousand. At the very top right, you see our projected, uh, sales tax revenue is gonna be about sixty thousand. It's, I, J E O projected a little more than that, but I was just being conservative at sixty thousand. So, if your payment's fifty on a twenty-year amortization, you got ten-thousand dollars of wiggle room or margin there, uh, each year. The sales tax revenue could fluctuate, it, it could go down, uh, if things start getting tough around here in the after economy. We could, we could see that affect city sales tax. Fifteen-year AM, I just threw that in there for comparison. So, really, this thing could be paid off in fifteen years if you apply the full sales tax to the, to the loan payment. But, there's only less than a thousand dollars of margin there. So I would recommend twenty-year, twenty-year AM, um, just to, just to be safe on that. So I guess my question for the council is, is whether two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand of additional down money on top of what's in the loss fund, is that gonna be doable? And, and we kind of need to know that. Uh, I guess Lowell and the Edmont Development, you know, they, they kind of wanted to get a commitment from the city. We went ahead and submitted the grant without that commitment, but, you know, um, once we get the... I think they're supposed to know in January whether we awarded that grant or not, so... So I don't think we have to make any, maybe decisions tonight, but I just wanted you guys to see what the, what the number is to our three-four thousand to get the loan at six-hundred thousand is, is what we need from the city, whether...
Did you get the... Hundred percent that we got? Is that gonna be consistent, you mean, on the last three years, right?
Yeah.
And that look like pretty consistent numbers?
It, it, they do look consistent, yeah. Now, we only have about, so the sales tax went in effect April first, right? And we only have three, three months, basically, of that sales tax revenue, and it's down. If you look at it right now, it's down a little bit. So, that's why I think we need to stay conservative. You know, the next few months, the summer months, we don't know what those numbers are yet because there's a two-month lag in what gets reported on the city's sales tax. So, maybe, maybe the summer months we'll, we'll use that up a little bit. Right now, we're kind of behind the, behind the eight ball of the sales tax revenue.
The only question, I have a six-hundred-thousand-dollar bathhouse. How big is the bathhouse?
Oh...
I mean, I got the estimate. The estimate was, um, Wausau, exactly the same amount as Wausau. And, and that's very, while I talked to him, I just wanted to make sure that we could, to do it.
J E O's estimate, I was like, this was, yeah, insane.
I, I, I guess I'm not gonna have people build a twenty-nine pound, or six-hundred Ds.
Yeah.
Overdoing it, building the toilet.
Is that bathhouse included that we have a, a roof or a heater in our stuff?
Wait, a toilet?
So that's, that's why it's probably a little longer to catch the heater and, and purifiers and everything in there.
And that was, we, Lowell approached me, like, with forty-eight hours turnaround. And I reached out to one person just to put some numbers in there prospectively. I don't know what that number's gonna be like when we have a competitive bid for that, right? But he, and actually, we shot to a number. In order to make this all work for us, in this process, and get under six-hundred thousand dollars loan for the bank, he had to be... Under this, under this number? Yeah, and I don't, I mean, yeah, it might be half of that. I know the Wausau one that was comparable, built four years ago, was two-hundred-some thousand dollars. But there's Leo in that because he had so much community involvement. And so there's nothing saying that we can't save half that cost. Right, because there's leader concrete, or whatever. Right, I'm not, I'm not saying that leader concrete's gonna do anything, I'm not saying the O C is gonna do anything, but, right. But we had to have a number that we weren't gonna go over to put into the grant. Sure, okay, that makes sense. And so I just, I just, I couldn't get a lot of the people to put a number together overnight, and he was willing to do that, so... Yeah, thanks, Brett. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you seem to work pretty hard and move pretty fast on it, and I got an application done, so... They said, they said the one huge plus for us is that we already passed the city's sales tax for the pool. So, that's gonna, that's gonna help me, or whatever, it's gonna look pretty favorable, as for that.
That's, that's what we did comment, and comment, Lowell said, if we get the grant like this, you already have to almost have it taken care of. And they don't want, they want to come in and say like, okay, now if you've invested this as a city, we'll help you out. Not, they want to be the one to carry it, or whatever, they want... And so we're in that situation where we have all systems go, taken care of. If we can take care of this down payment, which I honestly believe that we can now, and so...
Okay. So there's some legal things we need to take care of in order for the bank to offer you a tax-free loan, which will reduce your interest rate. So, normal real estate loan, typical rates, you know, going between seven, seven-seventy-five. So six, just call it seven and a quarter. So the rate that we offer the city is five-point-four-five, because the bank won't have to pay tax on that, on that loan. That's why you're getting a discounted rate. So we have to show the F D I C and the I R S that you guys applied for this loan, tax-exempt loan, and we have to pass the city ordinance in order to do that. So, so our, our sister bank, who is F N B O, they have a public financing department, so they will draft the ordinance for us. We don't have to, we don't have to do anything, they will do all that if they're actually, you know, working with other, two other towns in the state on pool projects. So basically, for us to offer that discounted rate, we have to show the I R S and the F D I C that this is officially a tax-exempt loan. So the city will have to pass the tax-except ordinance with intent to finance a pool renovation project at our bank. After that ordinance is passed, then we have to obtain a, we have to obtain a tax-except opinion from a lawyer, which our lawyers in Omaha will draft a letter saying, okay, yep, city of Crofton, that will be awarded this tax-free loan. So then, with my examiner show at the bank, the F D I C, I can show them that letter, and it's fine. And if we get a question from the I R S, then it's fine. So then I don't have to come back to the council and say, okay, we gotta jack up the rate back to seven and a quarter, because we're now paying tax on it. So it just kind of covers all our bases between the city and the bank in offering this, this tax-free loan. There is a fee, of course. So, so the public financing company that, that will use, they charge one-and-a-half percent to draft the ordinance, to get the tax-free opinion and all that. So, on one-point-five per, on a six-hundred-thousand-dollar loan at one-point-five percent, that is a nine-thousand-dollar fee. But we're talking a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in, in interest savings by doing the tax-free loan. So, yeah, it's a, it's a fee, it's upfront, but it makes sense. It's five-point-four-five versus seven and a quarter, you know, that, like I said, that's a hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars over a twenty-year AM, so... So, uh, other than that, they're gonna take care of that for us. If you guys just kind of give me the green light, I will have them draft that ordinance and, and get that on the next city council meeting, so we can, uh...
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Okay.
Lomack?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yep.
Pice?
Yes.
Evans? And now we're going record, thinking wherever the minute that you spend, or...
Thank you, Chief.
I know you've been, you've been not going out in the south, but...
Yeah, no problem. I'm just, yeah, hopefully we get that grant. I just think it makes sense, if we're gonna have all this new equipment to run the pool, we might as well take a serious look at financing the bathhouse on top of that.
Yep. This has a lot of moving parts, and I'm new to this, and I appreciate your time, you have a really good one. Yeah, if you guys got any questions, you can call. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions, comments, or concerns about that? If not, we'll move forward, I believe, right? The next item on the agenda, which would be Will Sanger? And Sagrante.
All right, thanks for having me. I wrote this down, otherwise I'd get scattered and I just get organized, so... Uh, first off, uh, just want to apologize if this happened. I mean, this, it's just, it's an ugly deal for both of us. Second, I want to apologize for not dealing this way, by myself, instead of, I know there's a lot of people talking, and it's, I probably should've just jumped in and got it, at least, worked a little harder to get this, uh, taken care of. Be honest, I don't know the interactions that, uh, what, what's gone on in the past. Uh, what, what brought me to here is Jason showed up when I was working, and he asked what was going on. So I just said, might as well get up here and let's, let's get it out on the table, so... After, I found out on the agenda, it's funny, after I got on the agenda, I drove straight to Lowell Yard and, uh, asked the guy, I said, you're gonna, you're gonna pay for this? And of course, he throws at me, he go, he pay, you, you pay for the, my two, two, two or three thousand, I don't know what it was, bill that I have, that I put into that house, and I'll pay it. Right away, of course, I go, you should, you print those statements out, and you give them to me, and we'll get this taken care of, so... So then, just to back up a little bit, little history of what happened here was, these guys in the wrestling world, they, they, I got a job up here, and they decided they were gonna move up. And, I don't know. And I did hear some watch-outs, but I'm one of those second chance people, I, I am, I just, it's... Probably gonna hit like this at hunting, but that's just how I am. And, uh, so I bought the Busch Camp house, uh, or their calling, and, uh, Vern Busch Camp did a bunch of work, paint for me when he was alive. And Dan also worked for him, so I think that's why I got the call to buy it. Plus, they knew I bought a couple other properties, so we got first shot at it, and said we'd buy it. And I thought, great, you know, five kids, big house, great spot for them. Well, they needed to get in, so we allowed them to do some work for us, and that's where, of course, that bill came from. So, meantime, uh, as he's working, you know, I was teaching and coaching at the time, so he, he, and since it was a workout deal. Six months later, for obvious reasons, we evicted him, and then this is what happened. So they walked out, left the, left the water bill. Left me with a lot of, a lot of money. I showed, I shared the results with, uh, with James, because he was my first contact to try and work on this. And, so, uh, write it at the time, seven-hundred dollars worth of water bill. And, uh, it's all said and done, you know, it's, I will, I will say, there, I, I end up having to take the second line of credit out to repair the house. So, uh, without, without all being said, though, uh, today I was looking, uh... Mike Stevens called me, great conversation, really nice guy, little funny story. He called me, he goes, yeah, this is Mike Stevens, I want to talk about, uh, this water. And I go, what the hell did my wife sign that for? I thought, I didn't know there was a Mike Stevens lawyer. Never been in trouble with lawyers before, so I didn't know there's a, so I thought it was Mike Stevens on the highway. So I thought, what, the church activity or something? So he explained what the deal was, had a great talk with him. Uh, ended up, a few days later, got a letter from him, made another batch of great points. But I still, I, I had some cards in my pocket that I spoke with my lawyer. And, uh, today, it's, it's odd. I follow a ton, with this real estate, it's, it's a new business to me. And I follow a ton of people that I think are good people to listen to. Here's a quote, said, uh, said lawsuits just to prove your right will end up costing lots and lots of money. And I think this is what it's come down to. And, uh, you know, I, I'm, I love the community. The reason I'm investing is community because I'm, I'm, to me, I'm bringing tax dollars in, cleaning places up. That's a hundred percent, that's what I'm doing for it. And, uh, you know, I know if Mike Stevens calls me, he ain't doing it, I'm losing his heart. So he's taking my tax dollars, and I'm, I'm bringing it to town, he's taking them back away from me. Uh, my lawyer's two-hundred-and-seventy-five bucks an hour, so you can tell, part of my line of credit, how much went to my lawyer. Uh, I'm just gonna pay it. But I'm gonna, I, I really want to apologize for this. This is, what, how I feel is, the three of us got pulled into a whirlwind, and these people stepped out and were just watching a show. And it's unfortunate, and I don't think, I don't think it'll ever bother them. I don't think it's, I think it's, I think it's a norm for them. And, uh, I, my screening process has really changed. And so, uh, through it all, Donna, I got a call, Donna still refers people to me, I, that's very good to you. After everything that happened, and you're still doing that, that's, that says a lot about you, thank you. So, so I'm paying, I'll pay the bill, and, uh, and I'm not saying, well, I'll pay it, I'm, I'm, I'll pay it. And, uh, you know, for, for you guys, uh, you know, it, it, this act, this is a business for you, I get that. And I know you guys work a, crap tower, I was gonna say some different. Uh, and, and hiccups like this, it's just, it's a waste of everybody's time, it's unfortunate. So, moving forward, I, I, I've got really good renters right now. I hope they stay with me, I work hard to keep them. And I got another one moving in, and she's gonna be, she actually works at the, the vet clinic, and I'm gonna work hard to keep her in there. And, uh, I, I'm, I'm, I will, if someone was looking for a house, and you give me a call and say, hey, heed the warning, I will take your advice with great respect. So, hard part of this is my very first rental, and I learned more from six months of that than I have learned the past eighteen months. So, uh, I'll get with Donna, and I will get something worked out, and we'll get it taken care of, so... Thank you, and I, once again, I really apologize for this. This is, this is not intentional, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will, thank you. Okay, moving on from there, uh, to the Cedar, Cedar Knox Water Raise, uh, water prices, there's some information in here.
They're raising the prices. Um, Chantel and I went through the numbers, and, uh, as you can see, that it's, um, thirty-nine cents, twenty-two cents per thing. Uh, with what we are collecting on it, uh, we are not going to be in the hole, we're still ahead, and we suggest not raising water prices at this time, Chantel and I.
So, I get a question, that's always on my mind. Do we monitor the amount of water that comes through to the amount of water that gets used?
Yeah.
And if it's a wash, if we're getting a million gallons coming through, are you gonna pay me?
We actually have so many accounts that the city is paying for, for water, like filling up the pool. We pay for the football field, the auditorium, the fire hall, the softball field. Um, we, we pay for the parks, the water. So, a lot more water comes in than what we actually bill out for. But, um, as of, with the customers, though, with what we're charging them, we're still ahead on water than, than behind, for just customer use.
So my question is, so every gallon that comes through is accounted for?
Yes.
It is? So we don't know leaks in the town, or?
Well, we have leaks.
Oh, we have leaks.
Yeah.
We have leaks, that's how we find out that we have leaks, when more water's coming through than what should be coming through.
And we pay, we pay the water in the football field?
Pay what?
We pay the water in the football field?
Yeah. No, I'm sorry, not the football field.
Okay, baseball field and the parks and stuff.
Yes, yeah, baseball field, softball field, and that, and, yeah, and the parks, auditorium, fire hall.
Sure, we do have that well, by the softball field. And, you know, that's, that's water there, and they water the fields, but we pay our water for the concession stand, and that's, right, drinking water, that's how much you pay. And well, if we dug up there, that's, that's to the north of that upper field. That sometimes goes over to the high school, and that practice field, if they will. They water that much guy, and they need to get it...
Mostly water drinking?
Yeah, so, the only thing that they water for the softball is concession stands and, uh, drinking water coming outside, I think.
I don't know. I don't have that to come in.
There's no water in the softball field, except for what's...
Just for the drinking and, uh, yeah, so... Okay. So we're not gonna...
Doing...
Raise anything up at this point?
No, no, Chantel says that we're good to go now, and we're probably looking at something coming up that's gonna have to... No, no, Chantel says that we're good to go now and we're probably looking at something coming up that's gonna have to have a increase. So we'd like to put it off as long as we can.
We did lose some water on that, uh, I don't know what street it is, it's over there with Alan Allison, who lives and all those guys.
Eastport.
A lot of water coming in from services and so on, so we got those done and I think it'll help our consumption of water going on.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so, any other questions or concerns or comments relating to that issue? If not, we'll move on to the panning variance.
Oh, I didn't mention that. So Jared has a, it's building accessory buildings, and it's in compliance with everything except the height. It is not in compliance with the ordinance is because we have a limit of seventeen feet on accessory building. Um, so that's the only reason he's asking for a variance, I think your house is eighteen-five?
Seventeen-four, from still wait to the peak.
And you're gonna build the accessory?
Same thing.
Same?
All that's a matter is it's either four twelve or five twelve pitch and you probably won't recognize the roof lines because that lot is lower than Roseanne's lot and my lot, so it's not like it's gonna stand out anyways.
So the general principle of us have been, you know, the seventeen feet we just leave is that the variance needed, but if you're not above the house, I mean, it looks fine, so that's all we're doing is requesting the variance. Begin to build it, you know, the same like this house, which is about a half a foot of buck.
Them guys that built them houses like Roseanne and, uh, Edson, them guys, we don't have a variance on the height of the house there.
A house could be thirty-five feet tall, thirty or thirty-five.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion to give them the variance.
Motion's been made in second. Walker?
Yes, Murphy?
Yep.
Pikes?
Yes. Happy bill!
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, moving on, the next thing is to approve the homecoming parade round by motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, so it would be Murphy?
Yep.
Pikes?
Yes.
Evans? And Walker?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is a mammoth, uh, destruction of forest, I guess, is, uh, approval of our policy?
Actually, I don't need approval, um, I just wanted to let you know that I gave you all drafts. Uh, Jamie picked herself up, uh, eighty-four yesterday, uh, this is what they are suggesting and they had different changes in, uh, laws uh, from Nebraska that hit better in some of our instances. I read the, uh, full book, I looked up all of the, uh, laws that they were suggesting and then they had a list of questions that needed answered and some things that needed to be fixed. And I did all that, I'd like you to look at them and to, if you have any changes or disagree with anything that I did, I promise not to take it personally, uh, please let me know and we need to know by October fourth, so I need, uh, that from you as soon as possible. October fourth, so I'd like it, um, you know, hopefully by the first so I can get it back to them if we're gonna make any changes. So, they've done a great job, uh, when you get to look through it and read it, um, uh, it's really going to be much easier to look at, I believe, than our policy book that we have now. And most of the things that I had to change was just dollar amounts, they had building permits in it as ten dollars per and we charged forty. Uh, they had the code enforcer down at zero, not where it's an hour, so I fixed that, just kind of things that were just, um, that, that they didn't have, information that they didn't have.
How much do we owe on each one to get them done?
I, I want to say they've had two payments, but I'm not sure if they've had two.
We said it, I think, in three payments anyway.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh.
They got two payments already and the last one is if we approve this, I can't.
And they will, uh, get this, when they get it done, everything that's put into it, then they will send us all new copies of it, then we will, uh, approve it and, um, agree on it.
And we will be electronic, right? This will also be available to?
Yes, it'll be on our, on our webpage.
Okay, City Gardens, the next thing on the magic list. We had one, is that right, this year, one? So.
Get rid of it.
I didn't get rid of it.
Get rid of it, I'll make the motion to get rid of it. We got the hydrant there, we got for a padlock on it or something. Make this, I'll second, uh.
Okay, motion's been made in second to eliminate the City Garden process.
Where's the City Garden at?
Right by the house, just west of the house.
Bobby, you're saying you're gonna hold it there?
Yeah, I'm gonna eliminate two now, I'm gonna water them on, you know, I'm just kidding, but anyway. Okay, uh, motion's been made in seconded, so it would be, uh, Murphy?
Yes.
Pikes?
Yes.
Evans and Walker?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, the next thing would be a resolution nine twelve twenty-four, Form nine forty, landlord verification for tenants.
Yep, we have a, uh, contract in our policy book, it's, uh, uh, section six dash one oh four. It's actually the contract that states, uh, that what we supply to the, the, uh, people who get our services, our utilities, sewer, water and garbage. And, um, we've had some problems, we do have a policy that, as Will had talked about, we do have a policy that the landlord is responsible for any leftover payments, if you can't collect them from the renter and they moved out or some of them just leave, they are, uh, responsible for that. Uh, what I would like to do is, um, I would like to give the landlords a better chance at this and I came up with Form nine twenty-four, I actually did some research and I found it and made it, uh, for the city of Crofton. And it's actually what it is, is that every landlord will come in and state who their tenants are going to be and give us the information that it's okay with them to put the bills in their names. And, and, um, we get that and we see by the clerk and we'll have that. Then they will get a copy of our policy, which states where they are responsible for what is left over and we already have on the application, when the tenant then comes in, it says, states on it, they have to give all the same information, their driver's license, everything, and it states on there that if they are sixty days overdue, we will be contacting the landlord. And I would like to, uh, do this as resolution to put it into the new policy book, but the resolution is strictly, and I'll read it to you, it is strictly to enforce and use Form nine twenty-four. The resolution is nine twelve, nine dash twelve dash twenty-four. A resolution, the city of Crofton, Knox County, Nebraska, regarding verification of owners and tenants' rights for city utilities to become part of the city policy. Whereas the city of Crofton requires verification from owners that their tenants may have the bill for the water, sewer and garbage put in their names. Whereas resolution nine dash twelve dash twenty-four will become part of the contract, which is referenced section six dash one oh four of city policy between the city and the applicant for city utilities. Therefore, be resolved, the mayor and city council of the city of Crofton, Knox County, Nebraska, as follows. To provide city utility services to the residents of the city, hereby approve a letter of understanding, Form nine twenty-four, with the owners of the rental properties and the city to have the water, sewer and garbage bill placed in the name of the tenant. Adopted and passed unanimously by the mayor and city council of the city of Crofton, Knox County, Nebraska, this twelfth day of September twenty twenty-four. Right now, the application is for the tenant. Some, um, landowners will call me and tell me that they got new people and tell me who it is, but I would like something from them showing who the tenant is and it also in here, I don't know if you had a chance to read it or not, I'll read it out loud. City of Crofton, Form nine twenty-four, verification ownership and tenants. I, we are the owners of the residence located at Street Crofton, Nebraska. I, we hereby verify that I, we have rented the above described residence to the following individuals as our tenants. We state that no other than the above tenants will reside in the above residence. We hereby authorize the city of Crofton to put the water, sewer and garbage bill in the name of the tenant and turn the water on at the above described address. I, we further understand that if the tenants do not pay their bill tonally, that I, we, as the owners of the above described residence, are liable to pay their outstanding bill and the city of Crofton may file a lien for that debt against said real estate. Finally, we state that the above tenants do not owe the city of Crofton for any delinquent bills. It'll be dated and signed by the owners of the property, so.
I'll make the motion.
Ask a question on it though, please? So, when they come and get that, they get that entire contract, so they get a read that says if I walk out, I'm responsible for that?
Yes, I will make sure that they get a copy, this is our?
So that they know that it's already alright to the?
Yeah, that's right.
The landowner, a bill. From the get-go.
Want your question?
So that she's gonna hand, I understand we get that as a, as a property owner?
Right.
But the renter comes, gets that same copy?
You should.
That says that, okay, I'm gonna walk out and leave this water bill, he's responsible for that?
What did, what did your contractual agreement say with them at renters?
You're responsible, you're responsible for the?
Yours says that, right?
Yeah.
Right, so yours, so this is just reaffirming that, hey, you know, the?
No, you're not following what I'm saying. They know right away, the bigger power is gonna charge me for the water.
Well, I was actually going to give this to the owners, so they know what the policy is.
So does my tenant gonna get the same thing?
No.
So they don't, they don't know that if they walk out, I'm responsible?
No, what they signed says that if you are sixty days overdue, your landlord will be notified of your account. That's what they get.
They don't get the part that?
Okay. Be bailed, you're?
Yeah, and I, and I personally, you put twen- twenty days on my properties. I, I think sixty's too much, that's two, that's two hundred bucks.
Yeah, I, I'd have to agree with that too, I think if you're late, thirty days.
Thirty days is anything on electrical or?
Electric, yeah, exactly, exactly, thirty days and you're delinquent.
Yeah.
And personally, I, at twenty days, I'd love to have a tax, have not received a, a payment for the water bill. After what I went through, I want, I want twenty days personally, so.
Frank can't do twenty days, we can do thirty days every, you know, once a month, right?
Depends on the billing cycle overall, so.
Yeah, so we can change it to thirty days?
Yeah, it's, it's not a, uh, the thing that, that they signed, it's not a resolution, it hasn't been accepted, it's just, uh, what we've used.
So can we make the motion to accept the resolution, just change the wording?
Uh, we just, yeah, we don't need a resolution for that, but I need the resolution for this, but we can just make a motion to change in the tenant's application from sixty days to whatever you want.
Thirty, thirty.
Thirty, okay.
So I'll make the motion to, to pass resolution twelve dash, or excuse me, nine dash twelve dash twenty-four.
I saw that, I saw that in the minutes, I don't, just stick around.
Thank you, thank you.
No, thanks, welcome.
I don't, I'm not gonna run into a hot wire twice, so this is, so, thank you.
Motion's been made in seconded, Pikes?
Yes.
Evans, yes, Walker?
Yes.
Yes, I'll make a motion to change the wording from sixty days to thirty days. I'll say it.
To thirty?
Thirty.
On tenant's application.
Motion's been made in second, Walker?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Pikes? Yeah.
So what is, uh, a normal water bill, delinquent, thirty days or sixty?
It will be now, yeah, it will be now. Actually, they're delinquent with the next billing cycle, but I have in there that I wouldn't call the landlord until sixty days. That gives them another thirty days to pay up the bill, so.
So, uh, as soon as they're delinquent on their water bill, the landlord knows?
Yep, yep, so it'll go right away, I don't want to deliver any more of that crap.
So at that point, can we call the city and tell them to shut the order up?
I don't know.
What is their, what is, what is their rule now?
We have to, uh, notify them in writing and they have fifteen days from the time that they get the letter before they turn it off.
They're about eight, two months.
With that, yeah, we're, we're not, we're not knocking on three months. You know, we, we give it sixty days, then we're ninety days, you know, we're up there.
Seventy-five instead of forty-five.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Try it out, see if it works, if it doesn't work, then change again.
Yeah, I, I, I think the majority of renters are, are good people and they're honest people and they take care of themselves, you know. But you're gonna run into a couple, you're gonna run into people like that.
You're gonna run into a rotten one.
Yeah. Okay, whole business would be the security window for the city office. I have no luck in a split security door kind of thing, finding any reasonable offer or installation for that. The window thing is still out there an option and I looked again, twenty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred dollars and Dustin can put that window in there for us.
I'll make the motion to put the security window in, we need to have it in there.
Sorry?
Yes, sir.
Motion's been made in second to go ahead with, uh, purchase and installation of a security window. So that would be Pikes? And Evans, yes, Walker?
Yes.
And Murphy?
Yes.
I have a question, uh, that door, if we have a window, there's no reason that they gotta walk into our office, right?
Door shouldn't remain locked, at honest discretion. If she allows somebody in there, wants to get up and do that, that's entirely up to her.
Her door lock?
If you have, if you have something different, I just keep that door open.
Just like with Tony.
Okay, the next item would be the disability insurance for our employees, I don't know if we have any, any clearer information about that.
Um, it's the same, uh, that you had last time, I did, uh, call Ryan today just to make sure prices haven't changed and they are, um, um, and it is the same, uh, prices have not changed, so it's, um, sixteen hundred forty-five dollars and some change a year for two people, dental and disability. And as I said, um, I have insurance, so as soon as we get a police officer, that could be traded over to him and be, uh, added bonus to his, uh, contract, if you like.
Go ahead with it.
You guys seen this last one?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Hey, Ryan? Ryan wasn't there, who was?
Ryan, you did. David, nice presentation.
Wait, a motion in second?
Yep.
Okay, so Evans is yes, Walker?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
And Pikes?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the sale of the police cruiser, I can't remember the dollar. Yeah, it's, uh, and I got it wrong, it's the colors bill, which must be the gray, gray one.
Yeah.
And the sale on the price of thirty-five thousand dollars to Knox County shares.
Jason, you're done.
It's already sold, isn't it?
Anybody sell it, we gotta make the motion to sell it.
It's already sold, okay.
Oh, is it already sold?
I'm fine with it, I'm good with it, I didn't know we needed a motion to sell it or not.
So we can get this thing done.
I'll make the motion to sell the car, we need it, we need it.
Second?
Motion's been made in second to approve the sale of the police cruiser for thirty-five thousand dollars. Walker?
No.
Murphy?
Yes.
Pikes?
Yes.
And Evans? So, what do we have? Okay, moving on to, uh, uh, community reports, right? And that'd be planning a zoning. I know you had one of them at your meetings.
Excuse me, yeah, we're working on some stuff, some new stuff. Um, we're looking at, we're gonna dive into some of this trailer court stuff and see if we can kinda sort through that and have a better feel for what Donna needs, what we need, and have discussions with the owner of the trailer. So that's in the future, um, we have our first vacated alley for norers that's been growing on for Gary Horr up there for a few months and Donna and I sent information and they drafted resolution, uh, some resolution orders. Okay, to the attorney to look it over and see if we made any mistakes, so. It's kind of a learning curve for planning a zoning too, we let it kinda go through the process and find out what we need to do. We're learning, we contact Knox County, that sort of thing, so, we're doing that. And then the, uh, zoning map, which is, we've been working on for years, I think we're getting close to doing a final draft on that and then, uh, once we do that, we may be able to just see if the council will approve the draft map, so we can start using it and then find somebody that'll actually draw a real map, so. Those are the things we're working on and we need some more members, which is Tim and Tracy and me and Tony, I. Mike's been there with us, helping. I, Mike's been there with us, helping us, and we've been waiting for, to try and get a couple more people. But we're looking at people and we guess they're in line, so that's where we're at, on the planning zone.
Thank you very much.
I got a question for you, Tom. Here's some spots around town, you guys probably don't want them there. Gating property like Mrs. Chan or, does that ever get straightened out and we can move that property to there?
That's the one we're working on right now, that's kind of our task.
There's, there's just more than that, I don't know.
Yeah, but then, we use that as our learning curve and the reason we did that is 'cause to vacate at a street or alley, you have to split it up between landlords, but fortunately, they own the land on both sides. So it makes it a little bit easier for us to, to, to have it happen, so. It's kind of our learning curve.
Where are we at with that house by the creek, or do you wanna burn that thing to the ground?
Well, the twenty-first, I'm gonna do it if I don't set on fire.
That one down on First Street, come on.
What are you, what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do?
The twenty-first.
Oh, you are?
Unless I decide to do it sooner.
Oh, okay, don't make that up, I said, I don't know, I know it's on the side. Okay, sweet.
Are they gonna do the same thing to that other one on, uh, Main Street, that Greenman? Are they gonna burn that or that next true maker house and walkers or something, we still have a message to that here?
Yeah, I did not get back from Mike with paperwork, I need to approach those people.
Okay.
I don't, I don't also do, I just, I need some kind of a documentation.
Sure.
For this same property and I don't know if you, where we're at and I'll ask one again.
Okay.
Um, is Will still on lines or didn't you guys?
No.
Okay. Mike makes a mention here about that house, that Greenman?
To Will?
Yeah. I know, I talked with him a little bit and I can't, the one on the corner, going down into the ballpark. That's the one, remember when they piled that up and got rid of it? Will said that'd take very long to get done. So, I guess I could talk to him too about it again.
Yeah, and I, I know the only issue is that, that the property is still in the grandpa's name. And grandpa's been deceased for thirty years, been deceased for twenty years and so it's just, and that's why I was looking for a document, where I had reached out to the living heirs of that and their tentative, all good with it, we just need a document that's, some magical document says, city can do with it what you want and like, John can tell you, those documents are just like hard to comply to, to move in the direction you wanna move, but I'm not gonna quit till we get something taken care of and I promise to myself and my neighbors there that we need to do something.
Well, if we all went through the learning curve ten years ago, we'd have those problems, but we're still on a learning curve.
Okay, moving on from there, economic development, I do have one bit of sad information for us, uh, that Kelly Andy, who was the Knox County Economic Development Director, has resigned from that position and, and, but Stacy Miller, who was working with the Knox County Tourism and Visitation, has stepped up to take that position. Kelly is going on to be, well, it's, it's, with Sarah James, of course, she's gonna be the veteran for Knox County, the, the county veterans administrator or whatever it is for Knox County, so she'll do well for that job. And Larry and I have to go, don't have to, but we're gonna go Monday night to a meeting to, to see exactly where we're headed to and how that affects us moving forward with economic development. You already approved, uh, the grant applications, as soon as I get them back in my Paul Fogs and we get receipts for the expenditures those people have, we'll write those checks right now at the Economic Development Committee, has those grants in their possession and as soon as I get them back, we'll go ahead and move forward with that.
Sweet.
Uh, so we should mention that the, um, that the grant for the pool house, uh, was due on the sixth and Lowell got everything in for, so that's it. And he actually sent me today a grant, uh, through the Nebraska Department of Environment, Energy, Public Water System Security and it's for up to ten thousand dollars and Dustin's getting it filled out. Bloomfield just did it and what he needs is, he needs testing sites, for example sites, and that's one of the things that Bloomfield put in for and got money for. So he's putting that together and it has to be in by the thirtieth, so we'll get it back to Lowell and get that in for that too, so. We got that coming.
Anything else to further see, Clark?
Um, yeah, I just wanted a, a couple of things, um, um, I don't remember the gentleman's name, but he's on the board of directors for the Main Street Treasures. He came in this week and said that at their Friday meeting, they had approved five thousand dollars for us they're giving to the city for one of those feed signs. Uh, they would like it to be one that's on a trailer, 'cause we had talked out at our last meeting that we'd like to have one, they would like it to be on a trailer so we can move it around town. But I was talking to Dustin and we've been getting ads for it, unbelievably, and they actually have, you can get a three pack for nine thousand dollars and we could put them up where we wanted, that we have cost the city four thousand dollars above the five thousand that they're getting. So, um, Dustin will get some costs in and he actually said that, um, this was a really good deal and that he'd also look to see if we can get them cheaper than that and he thinks that the ones that come on the trailers are pretty expensive, but he thinks that he can retrofit and build a trailer for us so if we wanna move it around town, so. Just, it was wonderful, we wanna thank Main Street Treasures for that wonderful, um, generosity, so. Other than that, I think that's about everything just going on in the, in the, you know, office, very busy, uh, trying to get everything done, it is the end of the fiscal year, so, um, yeah, I'm gonna keep you up to date as much as I can on what's going on.
Okay, uh, with that, I think code enforcer, no, treasurer, no, mayor, I had a couple things here, have, uh, the disc golf, the bases are poured with the structures in the five gill bucket and they're heavy for a manager or anybody, it, it's kinda been put out there and we're making, uh, uh, markers for disc golf, so I would hope in the near future we have disc golf set up and going. Uh, with that, I did, uh, have two patrons who are going to, gonna come to us and talk to agenda about water quality because, uh, water quality has become an issue now on East Fourth Street, where it never used to be and I don't know what the logic is there and I asked Dustin that, he's, hasn't gotten back to me yet, but I'm sure he will, on East, their water quality, where they have a, a young child that they take to grandma's house to bathe because their, the water's so bad there. And it's not been, I mean, it's, uh, traditionally that east side of town's been good, but there's, and I asked him to talk to their neighbors and get back to me if the local ice thing is there particular house and I didn't get any more feedback and then somebody down here across the street has, uh, doesn't wash their clothes and, and they have to wash their clothes because of the water quality too and I, I know that's a beneficial problem, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention and I did reach out to, uh, Jones with the help of Donal Jones, Electronics Jones Equipment, to check on, you know, pending our hiring of a police officer in the not so distant future, um, we have a police cruiser that has X numbers of thousands of dollars of equipment in the back of it and so I called Jones to see if, what it would cost to do the same process you did with the other police cruiser and to get that equipment installed and he said the bill last time was eight hundred and fifty dollars, but he said we have to, there's some equipment or whatever, but his, his estimate is to get the new equipment installed in our existing police cruiser that's just laying in the back, it's somewhere between twelve and fifteen hundred dollars, so. I don't know if you wanna go ahead and authorize that to be done or you wanna wait till you get somebody in here to do it, um.
Do you know Kevin Garvey? Do you know Kevin Garvey?
No, I don't. Did you give me his contact number, I can reach out to him?
I can call him too, I can.
Okay, that's about fine.
Emergency management in Arlington, but we're dealing with him on some radio and stuff for, new radios come up and he might be able to install that stuff too.
Okay, 'cause this just is.
Where's Jones at? Has.
Home hall.
Where we want to get our other police cruiser from, when I, that's Knox County recommended them and I reached out to other local communities, they just, they're, and, and Jones is gonna quit in the future, they're gonna quit putting in, in third hand, or, yeah.
Stuff they deserve.
Third hand stuff, so you, you can buy it and they're not gonna install it anymore, but they do this for us and because they did our other vehicle and they have this process down, they would, they would do that for that twelve hundred dollars, but, you know. I'm not making a comment on what it is.
Twelve hundred dollars, what to do?
Yeah, I, I make the motion.
Second.
Make the motion, I'll make the motion, third and, just be done with it, I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made seconded to go ahead and install that equipment, that's the, the video and the radio, 'cause there's cameras and all that kinda stuff, for Jones equipment. And I'll make arrangements to do that, he said the lead time on this particular one would be two to three weeks, uh, on that vehicle, 'cause they have history with that particular vehicle and doing that process. We'll get it down there, get taken care of. That'd be a nice long run. Okay, Pikes?
Yes.
Evans is yes, um, Walker?
Yes.
And Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have.
I have one more thing.
Okay.
I got ahold of a Legion member, Jim Hammons, and, uh, we got this fifteen ton rock out south east of town here that we're gonna have some guy come in and paint it some patriotic stuff for our moil over here. Only thing is, we gotta take that tree out right there and I talked to Dennis Truemaker and he said if the city would help dispose of the tree and trunks and everything, about two hundred and fifty dollars. And Foxy, I guess, uh, Legion's talked to Ryan Foxy, hold a, uh, corn estimate for it, twelve, fifteen inches thick and dew bar and everything and, and Bob and I then we talked about maybe get that sidewalk in, but we can't do that till the, the rock gets in, it's, it's pretty, it's, that's what Legion told me about asking. We just gotta get the tree out and Foxy's gonna get paid by.
Tree's gone.
What?
The tree is gone.
Oh, it is?
Mm-hmm.
No more shade tree?
No more shade tree, it was cut down today and, um, uh, David and, uh, Dustin took it to the, the.
Okay, good, then it's on, on schedule and so I gotta get in there and get the cement forward.
Then we have three hundred and fifteen, you know, cement outside of that goes from that, uh, shelter to the bathroom for the conceal, and then along the street, so the goal is that it's a handicap accessible, readily and easily available to people to get it from the monument anywhere out in that market.
So they get to the bathroom.
And that money we have from CBGB money and also from, we have a donation yet pending from, from World Two, right? Sweet.
Mark Mill.
Mark Mill, right.
He bought a eight to four thousand dollar worth of cotton.
Right. So we have resources to cover that, this can be a big part of the, gotta get a man for it, but.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded, uh, Murphy?
Yep.
Pikes?
Yep.
That's a good one.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You may.
She's here.
Have it.
Nick?
Next round.
Oh, do they? Sorry.
We have room, there are.
All of us have the same?
I like.
Yep, yes.
They said two people, didn't they say two people?
He put everybody's name down on it. Um, I need you to sign this piece and tell us what you want.
Yeah, this is right, this is getting right, it's really nice.
You could have my too.
I know.
Just gotta make sure I get my.
Your signature, yes, please.
Okay, see, we can, we can all of them. Might as well, if everybody's here, there's a little question to ask.